Meeting for Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The first order of business is the approval of the February fourteenth and February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four minutes. Any additions or corrections to these minutes? Do we have a motion to approve? Oh, wait, sorry.
So I was not present for the fourteenth, but I was here for the twenty-eighth. So there might be two different ones that you'd want.
All right, so let's.
I move that we approve the fourteen.
And then. Second that.
I guess do that first.
Sure.
I'm abstaining. Dave, you're abstaining?
Yeah, me too.
And I'm abstaining because I wasn't here.
I was here, you two, three of us.
And I move that we approve the second.
Are we going to vote on that?
Oh, I think.
It's a tie, or it does, I mean, it's three.
It's fine.
Yeah, I moved, got a corner. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And do you have a motion to approve the February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four minutes?
Yeah, I move we approve those.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
I abstain. Okay, the next order of business is the following new business where we will consider a petition of, sorry?
Done the election of officers yet?
Oh, right.
Because we've had a couple of absences. Your bylaws state that you'll do that at the first meeting of the year. So is there a motion from any member to appoint, well, we have to appoint a board, sorry, a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary? Typically, the secretary is a city staff member, and that has historically been the city planner, which would be me. Is there a nomination for secretary?
For you, you.
I'm going to.
I'd second it, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Rachel.
Yes, okay, is there a nomination for the position of chair?
I nominate Bob Allen as chair.
I'd rather nominate Kenzie.
Well, I mean, we could discuss it before we do.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I think both of you have done a great job. Bob, you filled in nicely, Kenzie's done a great job running things.
The only reason, I just, I've comfortably appreciated experience in that position. And I think, you know, you've got it. And I just, I just think that that position benefits from some tenure.
Are you happy with vice? Would you be happy staying on as vice chair?
Yeah, I'll stay as vice chair.
Kenzie, would you?
Everybody's comfortable with that.
Would you be willing to continue?
Sure.
Oh, good, okay. Well, I withdraw my motion.
And I, in turn, would nominate, I work with chair or vice chair first, can we do both?
Whichever, whichever you want.
Both.
We'll do both, I nominate Kenzie as chair and Bob as vice chair.
I'll second.
Second.
If that takes a second, I don't even know if a nomination.
Listen, anybody wants to talk about it more?
Any more further discussion?
No, thank you both continuing.
Sure.
It's a valuable contribution.
Absolutely, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great. Okay, next order of business is the following new business where we will consider the petition of Abundant Life Estates LLC to rezone approximately forty-eight hundredths of an acre located at seven-one-seven and seven-two-five Leesville Road from R-one low-density residential district to R-four high-density residential district to allow the construction of an entrance to a thirteen duplex, twenty-six-unit residential development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The subject property is comprised of two parcels located at seven-seventeen and seven-twenty-five Leesville Road, and it's approximately forty-two hundredths of an acre. If the petition is approved, the entrance to the twenty-six-unit residential development would be constructed. The units would be duplex-style with two units in each building. The residential units and parking for those units would actually be located across our corporate limit in Campbell County, and it would be accessed via a property in the city of Lynchburg. The, this is consistent with what we have historically done, saying that if you, if a development is going into the county but accessed through the city, it needs to be an appropriate concurrent-type zoning in order to allow it to occur. The city zoning ordinance does consider these more like apartments rather than duplexes since the buildings would be on one common parcel as opposed to individual lots, which we would more lean towards the duplex style. The property is recommended for low-density residential uses on our future land use map. These areas are typically dominated by single-family detached housing at densities of up to four dwelling units per acre. The portion of the project located in Campbell County was rezoned from business, general, commercial to residential multifamily in two thousand twenty-three. And they also updated their future land use map from urban development area, commercial to medium-to-high-density mixed. Not used to these different categories than we have in Lynchburg. The city traffic engineer has requested a trip generation report to determine whether a turn lane or turn taper would likely be required, and noted that the entrance may need to be right-in and right-out access only. Since then, the petitioner has submitted some information which indicates those warrants would not be met for the turn lane or taper, but we will be having the city's traffic engineer review that data. The duplex-style development would serve to create a transition between the single-family household, or single-household homes on Leesville Road and the more intense commercial development that would have occurred in Campbell County if this rezoning had not been pursued there and as well as the remaining commercial area that still surrounds that parcel in Campbell County. The city's technical review committee did review this petition on February sixth. Comments were minor in nature and would be addressed final to site, prior to final site plan approval, and the planning division recommends approval of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition?
Hello?
I've seen you guys in a while.
It has been a while.
I'm back.
Yes, welcome back.
So Amy Syke with Icy Point Surveying and Design, and clearly, I just like to pick projects that are hard, or they pick me, I'm not sure which one. So, so this time, we get to be right on the city-county line. As Rachel mentioned, all the, all the structures would be in Campbell County. We did go through quite a lengthy process with that. They, they actually decided, as mentioned, to modify their comprehensive plan. And if you're familiar with this area, it backs up to the new drive that comes through the CarMax area and ultimately into part of Ward's Crossing. So this would keep a buffer in between the city properties that are, for the large part, single-family, and then they changed it to multifamily. And then there's a portion that still fronts the, the main drive through there, and I, sorry, I forget the, the name of that road, but the parcels that front that road would still be of heavy commercial type with the hotels and the CarMax's and things like that. So we feel this, I'm sorry? Is that what it's called? I couldn't remember.
The direction the sign is written.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not very well-signed, so. So this is a good transitional piece down to the single-family that has been existing along Leesville Road for quite some time. It is in keeping with Campbell County's now multifamily housing. And of course, just like in the city, we would go through their technical review committee, meet all the stormwater regulations and so forth. Since there is a portion of development that is proposed in the city and there is land disturbance, we have had these sorts of projects before. We would coordinate with both the ENS folks to make sure that either both are available for the project, or sometimes they will defer to one another. So that would be how that was, would be handled. We are showing buffers just because the portion, like I said, there, there are no structures in the city portion, just the entrance, but we would not want that to become obtrusive. So we have buffers shown along all portions in the city. And we do, I don't know if that was in the updated packet, but we did update the sidewalk from five feet to six feet. I don't know if that made it into the packets. We did submit to Rachel, I think, yesterday, the, the traffic analysis that does not warrant left-hand turn in or out or a taper for this. These are duplex-style, I understand that the city calls them maybe apartments, but they are only essentially one structure cut in half, just like a, a normal duplex. They would not be for sale, but they would be just two units in, in each structure. There would be sidewalks throughout, of course, that's in the Campbell County portion, dumpsters and things of that nature. Sewer is actually handled through Campbell County. This, it would be constructed along the rear of the property. They have obtained an easement from the adjacent property owner for sewer. Water is actually through the city but coordinated with CCUSA for billing purposes and things of that nature. We do have traffic counts in and out that we've performed the analysis on, and so if, if that's a further question, like I said, we're, Rachel forwarded that on to the traffic department, but happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Amy. We'll probably call you right back up.
Sounds good.
Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anybody here in opposition to speak, who would like to speak? Okay, no comments that came in. Okay, so at this point, the public hearing is closed, and commissioners can ask their questions to city staff or the petitioner?
I had one question.
So is Bud Drive a public road?
Amy, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that. It is.
That's a good question.
More like a driveway.
That's a question.
In terms of what it looks like.
So technically, it is, through all our research, city right-of-way. The city map room doesn't, can't find anything on it. We've researched it in both the city and Campbell County. On GIS, it's shown as city right-of-way. If you drive down Bud Drive, it looks like you're going down somebody's gravel driveway. So technically, we, it's TBD. I mean, we've had our title searchers on it and everything. We asked the city. We, they would have to improve it for fire safety purposes. What we have shown, typically, for safety purposes, you never want to dead-end a property, especially one that has some sort of multi, you know, multifamily that are, you know, even in neighborhoods now. So what we have and what we've done on other projects that were in the city and also Campbell County is we have a fire gate that has the, the fire safety, it's called a Knox, that's a brand name, it's like Kleenex, but it's called a Knox box, and the fire departments all have a key so that if any fire response were to occur in here and the main entrance was blocked, the developer has to improve Bud Drive at least to a standard for a fire truck to enter, traverse the way to get into the rear of the property. They would have the, the Knox key that is kept on file at the fire department, and they could enter that way. Again, that would only be if the main entrance was blocked, but in a response, they would already be aware that there is a fire gate that they would have an option to use. So the mandate is a fire road has to support seventy thousand pounds, which I think is the weight of a ladder truck. And so they can be gravel, which is fine, it just has to be proven to support that weight, which we typically do with a, a geotechnical test, so.
Thank you.
But at this moment, it's pretty much treated as public, but the city nor Campbell County is maintaining it in any way, shape, or form, so.
So the, the residents won't be able to use it?
No, there's a, the gate would be blocked off there.
And it would have to be manually open?
Yes, it would be.
Somebody would have to sit there with a key?
Yes, it would only be for fire purposes.
Got it.
We've done several other multifamily projects where the fire department prefers that it be a loop-through for connectivity, but traffic doesn't want, want it because then you have multiple exits and entrances that could conflict each other, which would probably be the case here. If you had somebody that was coming out Bud Drive and somebody is coming out the main entrance, they could conflict each other. So in limiting driveways and access along Leesville Road, as, as has been the, the push, not only in the city but in the county as well, we're funneling everyone to one. Now, again, the amount of trips, I mean, I know that it's thirteen structures and twenty-six units, but, you know, it's, it's low volume, lower volume.
Right.
Than, you know, a four-story, forty-eight-unit building, so.
I have just a, I mean, question about the, the drive, excuse me, coming in off of Leesville that, that has the proposed new connection for shared access to seven-twenty-seven? What, just, what's the thought process?
So even, even though the one on, and I don't remember, you said seven-twenty, for the private residence? So that driveway is actually encroaching on their property, it, it's over the line. So portions of the driveway that were built, were built on my client's property, so.
Portions of their driveway?
Portions of the, the single-family homes driveway were built across the property line.
On your seven-twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and that's a residential driveway. This is a commercial entrance that would be for this project, and so they would literally be turning into each other, and you couldn't have someone coming out of their driveway as someone was coming out. I mean, they'd be literally right next to each other. So the, our client has talked to these folks who would basically give them a, the same shared driveway, but give them a safer parking area, a safer way to enter their own property that was agreed to by everyone.
So essentially, so they don't have to back out?
Right, right. Yeah, so they can come and, and essentially have their own parking area that would be their own, so.
And the other question, just curious, Rachel, if there's any, so if you're, if you're looking at where that driveway is going in with, with where the, the line goes for the lot, there looks like there's a significant, you know, but pretty good size of green space right there. Is there any possibility of them putting one of the duplexes, like putting an extra duplex there? I mean.
There's not enough.
Like it can't happen?
Not with setbacks.
Okay.
You're talking about right there between where like the new parking area for the seven-twenty-seven and then the?
Yeah.
The city line?
Yeah, it just, yeah, it looks like.
I mean.
No, it just left me. But anyway, it just looks like there's enough green space there, but you're saying there's not.
Well, and it certainly couldn't, you couldn't put a duplex in R-one either. Because isn't it R, it's R-one right now?
But I think, Kenzie, Kenzie's asking if.
If it goes through and it, and it gets changed to R-four?
Oh, you're saying afterwards, oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I guess the question.
Correct. If it, if it gets changed.
We're resounding this for access road, but will there be space for any structure in addition to the road?
Wow.
What are you talking about, Rachel?
So like along the drive, it looks like you could, yeah, right in there.
Yeah.
Right in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, actually. If you come in the drive right before, you would have to turn left or right.
I, I don't think you, no, maybe, but.
Theoretically, I think, I think you could squeeze one in there. I don't think it's extremely practical, but just, is it within the realm of possibility?
Anything is if you want to spend enough money. Well, and on, on the rear, we limited it to their new ordinance, so I think we're, we're max of what we can do per unit on the, the rear portion, real parcel.
For, in Campbell?
Yeah.
But in theory, on the Lynchburg side.
Right.
You could put something else in.
You could put something there.
Twenty years from now, if someone decided they wanted to.
Oh, on the Lynchburg side?
They could put something there.
Theoretically, yes.
Theoretically, yeah. But you'd have to comply with any setbacks.
To that point, it's just a point of curiosity. You own that other lot on the other side, that's seven-twenty-one.
Yeah, that's going to stay a rental as far as.
This is going to stay around as you go, yes. Because that would be the logical, I mean, the office would have to come in and rezone that as well.
Sure.
But it would seem like that would be a better idea.
No, I don't see that, I don't see it happening either.
Yeah.
Rachel, you seem to indicate the city's traffic engineer had not come to a hard, fast conclusion on the right-in, right-out need?
Not at the time the report was written. We didn't receive the trip generation numbers in time for them to review it prior to putting out the planning commission packet. So I know, Amy, you said you didn't think you met the warrant for the.
We don't meet the.
Turn lane or taper.
Warrant for turn lane and taper, correct. The city's, I mean, that's, I've ran into that on several occasions. That has come down to a technical decision through the site plan process of whether it's right-in, right-out only, and typically, we just have to comply with whatever comes out of that, so.
So what happens if the engineer comes back and says, I still think we need right-in, right-out only?
Then we have to, I mean, at, at that point, we have to do it.
So that, that's independent, that's independent of what we decide here?
It is. We will be having him review those numbers prior to city council. The calendar just did not allow for it.
No, that's fine.
At this juncture, but yes, if, if ultimately that's what it needed to be, then it would be enforced at the site plan phase.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't something where they came back and said it was needed, that it would have to come back.
Yeah, we, we pretty, we pretty much don't have a choice.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to.
If you had to have a right-in taper, would you have to take some land from whatever, seven-twenty-three or whatever that.
If, we shouldn't have to have a taper, but if we had to, had to have a right-in, right-out with like a pork chop, which is the funny little island thing, we might have to rob a sliver of the front on the next, on the piece that they do own, but they have no intention of tearing that down at this time.
The developers own that anyway?
Uh, yeah, the one to the north.
Oh, to the north?
Yeah.
Well, that wouldn't be part of the right-in, that would be, it would be right-out, but.
Yeah, it, we would have to configure it to where it would center up if we had to take a foot or two from the adjacent property.
Okay.
And that would be the logical place to take it from.
Okay.
I mean, we've, we've had a lot of Leesville petitions, and no one's needed a right-in, right-out, that comes up pretty consistently, and it's never been needed, although eventually it might be because of all.
Somebody's going to trip the scale at some point.
Yeah, exactly.
Everybody's just kind of going, I hope it's not me. That's, it's how it is with all development, first in, you can pretty much do what you want, and last person in, sorry.
So remember that when you come back in five years. And we say no.
I understand.
If someone else says no.
It's a matter of public record, too, so you can pull it out.
I mean, I think if this entire development was all within the city, I would have more discussion on it because of everything that's going on at Leesville, but since we're only discussing granting access for, for the county development, I'm less inclined to raise any objections.
Except for the fact that, you know, we're the straw, this, where all the water's going to come out. I mean, you know, to me, it makes perfect sense from a, from a buffer standpoint. You know, I, I, at this point, I don't know what you can do with the, with the right-in, right-out. I mean, from the standpoint of responsibility, you know it's going to happen on Leesville Road, makes, you know, it makes sense to think about, but is that, that's not within our purview to make that, I mean, at this juncture, I mean.
Yeah, it boils down to.
You've already got, yes, what the traffic comes back with. But I, you know, but I do, like you, Dave, I worry about the amount of traffic that's going to come out on the Lynchburg side because that's where it's all going to come from. On a road that, that we know, you know.
And I'm not, I'm not convinced right-in, right-out makes it better because then people just pull a U-turn a quarter mile down the road, which is certainly not any safer than making a left-hand turn onto Leesville, so. But again, that's not our, we don't have to worry about that.
Struggle with it, but I don't want to deal with it.
But you, and, but you're still, and I agree with you, but you're still taking an R-one, one of our R-one lots away and, and turning it. You know, you're still giving, just like we did on Timberlake, or not on Timberlake, Gold-Greys Mill Road, you know, it was a single lot that you didn't want the duplexes on there, but it, it still switched from R-one to R-four.
Just FYI, this is a trailer now, just.
Right.
But it's still R-one, I agree with you completely, and like I said, if this was, if this whole petition was within the city of Lynchburg, I probably wouldn't support it.
Right.
But it's hard for me to stand in the way of this county project because of access.
Sure.
And a part of it maybe being a good neighbor to the county.
I think as time goes by, we'll have to revisit Leesville Road eventually because I think, you know, when you look at the developments that are around that area, it's actually, this mirrors what's going on all around it, and you're going to get to the point where people won't want an R-one, they'd be like, well, I'm not interested in buying an R-one in this section of the road. And so then this is where with the comprehensive plan, I think, comes to play, that I think we need to. Yeah, so I would, I would tend to support this.
And the great thing about Leesville is that we're ahead of the game with the intersections of Timberlake and the airport. I mean, those, those have been redone, and they're really effective, I think, now compared to what they used to be. Ten years ago, it couldn't handle what it's handling now, so we're, we're not playing catch-up with Leesville. It's actually fairly good shape.
That's an excellent.
Well, I would, I would make a motion that we accept this proposal as it's written.
I would second said, said motion.
All in favor? Actually, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, new business, any other new business? I had something to bring up. I had a thought, and I wanted to bring it up to you guys to see, to see what your thoughts were. Downtown Lynchburg has had a significant amount of revitalization over the last seven or eight years, which has been amazing to see and be a part of. But the, the downtown two thousand forty master plan, when it was created back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, recommended that the street-level uses would be for businesses, and then residential use would go above the, the street level. And most other, other cities that have the same vision have, you know, been able to, to enforce it or, or make sure it happens by changing their zoning, and Lynchburg has never done that. And even though we had, you know, we, this plan was adopted by city council in two thousand eighteen, nothing was ever done with that, with the zoning changes. So just, there's more and more revitalization going on and development, and I just wondered if that was something that we wanted to discuss or look into or have planning, the planning department look into, or just wanted to bring it up.
I, you know, I, so I, I was thinking, and we had this discussion, we looked at a proposal on Ford Avenue near Fort Hill Village, and this issue of the fifty-fifty split. You know, I think, I think there's a lot of things like that and like this that have to be addressed in the comprehensive plan, so I'm wondering what our process is there because I feel like that's where some of this has to take place, and I don't know what, what the future is right now or where that's headed.
Well, if you're asking, it's, it's definitely within planning commission's purview to direct staff to look at the implementation of, of the plans. So if the commission feels that it's an appropriate time for us to start that process of figuring out what downtown, or. of figuring out what downtown, or downtown commercial on the first floor looks like, then we would be happy to start that process, or other, other zoning updates as necessary.
What was the situation that we had, this is maybe the one you're talking about?
Well, we had, so we had the, the Fort Hill by Quaker Memorial, and then we had right across the expressway, we had somebody who wanted to put apartments on Ward's Ferry Road or townhouses, and, and, and we're looking at this piece of land, and I've talked to a couple council members, and they're like, well, this, this land is great for business. And I'm like, well, you know, I don't know. I think we need to revisit what, what, how land is used, and, you know, I, I think that we, it's kind of funny because we had two different outcomes on that from council, but they're really a very similar, you know, similar thing. So I think we need to look at, at land a little bit differently than, than what we have before, and, and I'm not sure how you do that, but I feel like we see it more and more, people wanting to use things a different way, and they're like, well, we can't. And, you know, we, we had a, had a, there's some, some things that fall outside the plan, like the cornerstone, where the guy's like, I want to, I want to, I want to build this commercial space and have, have an apartment above it, and they're like, well, you can't. You can only build the commercial space. And so I'm trying to think how we can be more friendly to that kind of, you know, that kind of development in areas that support it well, and it also generates revenue for the community, so.
Absolutely, and it's, it's interesting and good timing that, that you bring that up because we, staff has engaged in comprehensive plan focus groups all day today and yesterday, including like a land use and development focus group. And, you know, of course, we're still taking in input and none of this is final, but something we're hearing from the development community is that flexibility is going to be important moving forward for our city, for, in terms of zoning and, and uses and things like that. I would caution, well, I don't want to say caution, but I would like to see how that conversation kind of flushes out in the comp plan in terms of the flexibility and mixed use and things like that. What the chair is referring to is the, you know, it's mentioned actually a couple times in the downtown twenty forty plan that ground floor retail got, or ground floor, commercial or active uses on the street are, are an important facet of a downtown, and that's what makes downtown what it is. So, you know, if, if planning commission wants to direct staff to look at both of those things, then that's, that's your purview, but I would, I would, as a, you know, in my professional opinion, I would recommend we see how that plays out with the comp plan in terms of that, that piece, set that aside for now, and if planning commission wants to focus on the downtown zoning question, we could do that.
Wasn't that very similar to how our, like the PUD, like Windhurst was developed with the same mindset, all commercial on the lower floor, residential on the top?
Well, I just, I don't know, do you have, what are your thoughts? I mean, just, there's a lot happening down there and.
But I, I'm, I'm sorry, there's, it seems like there's a couple issues that are swirling.
But I don't want to get mixed up. Are you, can you restate, just for me, please?
Sure.
The question that you're asking?
So the, the master, the two thousand, the twenty forty master plan, the, the vision of downtown would be that the ground level would be businesses, you know, restaurants and whatever, and residential would be above.
Right.
And there's no way now of controlling that because it's not in the zoning. It was, it was adopted by city council, but there's no.
You mean enforcing the company? Okay.
The vision, the vision of the plan is adopted, but there's no mechanism.
And is, is there evidence that, that, that it's being taken advantage of?
I don't know if I would say it's being taken advantage of. I, I guess it was more of if that's, if that was what Lynchburg saw, that, you know, the people that, that came together to.
And put some teeth on it.
Correct, and that's what they saw.
I got you.
And there's nothing, there's nothing in, in the zoning to kind of keep that, yeah, I mean, of course, I'm sure there could be some exceptions and that stuff, but if there's nothing to keep that from, you know, just letting anybody do whatever they want in an R, you know, R1, you know, then it steers from the master plan, just like a comp plan, you know, you had certain zoning that reflected comp plan. So it was just something that I've been thinking about and.
I think it makes sense. If only, if only to get ahead of it.
Right, right.
But the only, the only thing, and I think Tom brought it up, is, you know, when you start talking about mixed use, you know, the whole definition of, of what's it going to look like? I mean, I go back to the cornerstone conversation, it was difficult because, yeah, they were trying to weasel in, I suppose, but above more importantly, they were raising, I thought, a serious issue about space usage, land usage, and how are we going to take advantage of, you know, our, our units of real estate, if, if that makes sense. So I see it as two, two points. I don't think there's any question that we need to do that. I would be in agreement with, with Rachel's idea of let's definitely put a, you know, flapper or, you know, whatever, this little insert tab things on that, and let's roll through our data, and let's see where that does, and we'll pull that tab out again and see if it would make sense.
So it's really just a.
A lot of technical terms.
Just bringing it up, you know.
Yeah, makes sense.
It's a concern, and, and if, if you agree or see that, you know, we, we could just ask planning, planning department to just look into it further and come back with a recommendation or.
Yeah, but I think as we look down the road and we start, Dave kind of brought this up today, as we start to look at a diminishing amount of resource from the standpoint of residential, and, and quite frankly, you know, other than going back into rebuilding, we're looking at a, at a diminishing resource of developable, developable sites.
Yeah.
And I think for us to not think ahead and think about, well, forget what it looks like now, just like we did with Leesville Road a minute, roll forward ten years, you know, what have we wrought? Because that, that's what we're talking about, and I think that to think ahead about that makes perfect sense, and it's definitely the right thing to do, and not only that, but we probably ought to challenge ourselves as we go forward with the, with the comprehensive plan to think about other stuff that we might want to bring up, to, to talk about as part of that, because things are happening all over the country though.
Now's the time, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
And we're starting to see some of that stuff with the, the whole energy farm thing. I, I wouldn't have thought to do that. That's a great example, but those, I think that's a great thing on your part, Kenzie. I think that makes sense for all of us to think about that.
What's that, Madam Chair?
So, well, you, we don't, do we need to do a motion or anything like that, or is it just a, just a call to action?
Is there a consensus among the planning commission to have the planning division look into ground floor retail in the downtown environment? And just bring some recommendations?
I'm with you on the vision. I'm just confused on the.
What, what would you look into?
Is it not codified?
It's not codified.
It's not codified. You'd actually be building some.
Then I think it should be. I mean, there, though, or I'm, I'm just thinking where in downtown is not like that, although the, I mean, there's some residential sections on the corner of Fifth and Church Street. They're residential up and down, but they're residential. They never were commercial.
Well, and, and that's what staff, I think, would be looking at is, you know, probably not a blanket approach to ground floor retail everywhere in downtown because it's not going to make sense everywhere.
Right.
And we would need to figure out just what it looks like, what other localities are doing, how they enforce it, that sort of thing, because, you know, not to pick on any one owner or property developer because it's not, because downtown is a, it's almost like a living, breathing organism, right? It, it all works together, but, you know, when we start to lose our ground floor retail spaces, that, that starts to change the shape of, of what downtown looks like, you know, when you're walking down the street and you're not passing active shops or uses, or if it's just a closed up, you know, door, it sort of takes away from the walking environment downtown.
From my education on this, when we talk about commercial use versus residential, and then we use, we slide in a word like retail, there's, there's going to, I'm assuming the work that you might be starting in terms of what you've just brought up would include some sort of view into retail versus professional commercial use?
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm speaking extremely generally when I say.
Sure, yeah, and that's what I'm trying to get my head around because I'm with, I'm with you on the whole vision of it, but like.
That doesn't mean there's going to be a shop in every storefront, right? We know that's not practical.
Right, but, but there's also a insurance agency on the ground floor of every building in downtown Lynchburg, that's also not really.
Yes.
What, what we're looking for either.
Yeah, so that's, that's absolutely something we would be looking at is where would this be required, where would it go, where would, you know, what would be ideal in terms of uses, what would be acceptable versus not, less favorable? You know, just.
Which we've done with other, which we've done with other situations.
Yeah, at this point, you would just really be instructing staff to, to look into it and to bring you recommendations.
Yeah.
We're not, you're not adopting an ordinance or moving anything to council at this point.
And it's also kind of the blend too. I mean, to, to Tom's point, you know, where does the blend make sense in Lynchburg? Yeah, so anyway, yeah, I think that, I think that.
But also let's ask about uses. One of the things that I've had several different people mention to me was questions around storage and how that's like a, you know, twenty years ago, that was like a nobody wants storage, and now we see the things that are being built, and the, the one that we heard two weeks ago, the same company that has the one over off of the expressway.
See, and that's where I get nervous because all that stuff is funded by private equity. It doesn't exist here in Lynchburg. They live in Atlanta or they live somewhere else and.
All that money gets siphoned out.
Well, I'm thinking more of like storage supporting people who live that, right in that area. For example, like somebody said, hey, commercial, I want my storage on the bottom floor, and then I want some apartments on the top, top three floors, you know, so that would be one of those things, what kind of uses go in that. I'm not saying building new storage areas, but I don't think storage is one of the things in there, is that I'm not really sure, is, is that an allowed use?
There's, no, you cannot do self-storage in downtown, and that's probably something that we would not encourage if we were to adopt this into, you know, if we were to make an ordinance out of this because it doesn't contribute to that downtown walkable environment. It's not a service or something active happening on the street.
So if I own a building and I want one floor to be storage, and the main floor's my office.
Now you're getting technical.
What's that?
So now you're getting technical.
No, no, I think that's what, that's what they were asking. It's like storage for their people, but they're like, I don't think I'm allowed. I'm like, well, I don't know, and I forgot to.
Yeah, I mean.
But that would be one of those things that, can you have that? That's a, a use in the space and he rents it to the tenants.
In my mind, what would be most useful in terms of the exercise, not necessarily what you'll do, but like for my brain to work, would be to understand what the mix is, understand what our mix currently is, and then there's got to be some level of like, what are the anchor, do we have the right number of anchor businesses that will then help bring more fuel to those other ancillary businesses that are more like mom and pop shops, like, you know, what I might have? I, I, I don't know the answer to that. Like, I don't know if any, if we can make any good sound decisions off of, without having something similar.
Right, which is why we would.
Yeah.
Kind of go try to find that for you and get, you know, and it'll, it'll be probably, you know, more than one conversation because you'll have questions and you'll have ideas.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see what, what the mix is in other places and how it works.
Yeah. Do you all benchmark like that?
Benchmark against other localities?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, definitely. One of the first things we do when we say, you know, what is or isn't working, it's what are other localities doing, and maybe call them and find out how it's working for them.
Sure.
Sounds like a fun project.
You have an answer in two weeks.
Consensus agrees.
Yes.
Okay. Any, any objections to that?
No, no, sounds great.
Okay. Any other business or old business? We have a meeting March twenty-seventh. Do we have something on the agenda?
I believe you should.
Okay. All right, so next meeting, March twenty-seventh, four P M.
All right. All right. Thank you. Oh, wait, I have it moved to adjourn. Yep, second.
I'll second.
All right. All right, in favor. Great.